Good evening. I'm Linus Gilery, Superintendent of Schools. And tonight, the May 15, 2025, meeting of the Brookline School Committee is called to order. I would like to read the letter from Town Clerk Ben Kaufman confirming that newly-elected members have taken their oath of office. I, Ben Kaufman, Town Clerk for the town of Brookline, duly qualified and acting as such, having custody of the records hereby certify that at the May 6, 2025 Annual Town Election held in accordance with MGL Chapter 41, Section 1, Valerie Freas, Donna Perry, and Robert J. Weintraub were elected members of the school committee for the town of Brookline for a term of three years. I further certify that in accordance with MGL Chapter 41, Section 15, that Valerie Freas, Donna Perry, and Robert J. Weintraub were sworn to the faithful performance of their duties as a member of the school committee for the town of Brookline. Let's congratulate our new members as well as our returning member. The school committee chair and vice chair are to be elected for a one-year term by a majority of those members present. Unless a vote taken to the contrary, no member may serve as chair for more than two consecutive one-year terms. At this time, I will ask members for a motion to nominate someone for the office of chair.
I nominate Val Freas.
Mariah nominates Val Freas. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Suzanne seconds. Are there any other nominations for office of chair? If there are no further nominations, hearing none, I will ask Ms. Fitzpatrick to call the roll for vote to close nominations for the position of chair.
Okay, so this is just a vote to close the nominations for chair. We have one nomination. Yes or no? Suzanne, how do you vote?
Yes.
Val? Jessie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Sorry, is there -- do we just vote? There's no discussion? Oh, sorry, closing the vote? Yes.
This is a vote to close the nominations.
Thank you.
Yes. And Bob? We should have showed -- yes. I heard. Bob is a vote of yes.
There you go.
Testing.
Oh.
There you go.
Just got you.
So typically now, the superintendent would ask for the vote on this nomination, on this motion, but I suppose we could discuss it now if members would like.
I'm just asking what the --
We hadn't typically had discussions.
So I just have -- I do -- can I have a question?
Turn your mic on.
Actually, I'll skip it. I'll skip it.
All right, Betsy, do we have to take any further action?
So now we have to actually take the roll call vote on the nomination.
On the nomination.
To make Ms. Freas the chair.
All right.
First vote was just to close the nominations. I know it's very procedural, but this is the vote to make her chair. So are we ready? I'll call a roll call. Suzanne, yes or no?
Yes.
Val? Jessie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yep.
And Bob?
Yes.
Okay.
Congratulations, Chair Freas. Not yet.
No, right now, after we do the vice chair vote, we'll change.
But the new chair conducts the vote for vice chair.
Yes.
Oh, great, okay.
Yes.
That takes me off the hook there.
You want to get the script over?
I'll take the script.
It's on the second page, Val, item number four.
Please, Dr. Gilery.
Yeah, sorry.
Let's off again.
I'll now ask Ms. -- There we go. Just went off. Mine is acting up. I'll now ask Ms. Fitzpatrick to poll the members for a roll call on nomination -- oh, sorry. Poll members for nominations for the position of vice chair.
Yes.
Jessie?
I nominate Bob Weintraub.
I'll second that. Carolyn was a second? Thank you.
Any other nominations? Right here. Suzanne?
Yeah, I nominate Sarah McTodder.
A second. And Mariah seconds. How do we work that? Are there any further nominations?
Yes, thank you.
I'll nominate Suzanne Fetterspiel.
Okay, is there a second?
I actually respectfully decline.
Is there a second? No second. She declined, but I don't know that she can decline the office, I think. But I think we still -- if somebody seconds, that we still vote. Any other nominations?
I'm going to decline.
I'll nominate Jessie. Hefter.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any other nominations? Okay, so how do we proceed, Betsy?
Well, just let me clarify. We have Ms. McTodder nominated by Suzanne, and that's been seconded. And then we have Dr. Hefter nominated by Ms. Thal, and that's been seconded. Those the two nominees? Everyone agrees? I don't think we've had it before. I think the fairest thing would be to have a vote, as opposed to a yes-no, have the two candidates, and do a roll call vote on the two candidates. And it's you -- when I come to you, you tell me the name that you want. Our policy doesn't say anything specific other than what it says, so. So I think that as I call the roll, your vote is not a yes or a no. It's the candidate who you want to see in the position of vice chair, of the two that have been nominated. Then I tally those up at the end. And we do need a majority of those present, so we need to get five.
And we need to close -- I don't think we voted to close yet the nominations.
Well, that's a good point. Yes, that's right.
Okay, I'm moving to close the nominations. Is there a second?
A second.
Andy seconds? Okay.
Betsy will do the --
Betsy will do the roll call.
I'm sorry. Again, is there an opportunity for discussion, especially since we have two people?
Yes, this is just closing the nominations.
Okay.
All right, so on the vote to close the nomination, Suzanne?
Yes.
Val?
Yes.
Jessie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
And Bob?
Yes.
Okay. So again, now, if...
There's -- is there any discussion on the motion on the floor?
I...
Or the vote on the floor?
I think the motion is that -- because it's been made that we have two nominees for a vice chair. And so any conversation about that, I think, is welcome at this point.
Well, I can say why I nominated Jessie and why he would be my preference. We are going into a period where we want to attract a superintendent and be a unified school committee. And the relationships among school committee members are important. I think Jessie has excelled in that. I think there have been some interactions that were not positive in terms of potential leadership and relationships with Sarah. So I think it's really important that we have a steady person who can represent us, handle pressure. This is going to be a contract negotiation year. We have a lot to accomplish. And I think Jessie is the better person.
I'd like to call the vote. Okay, any other comment?
This week has been -- there's been, and I won't say there's violations of open meeting law, because there isn't, but I have heard from members about who was going to be vice chair. And it has been -- it has been a different run-up to this vote than any other year. And this is the first year in my recollection that we've had two different people for vice chair. And I can't say that I felt comfortable this week. And I really hope that as this vote proceeds, that the membership will understand that we are turning from a campaign season to a year of governance. And it is very different to campaign than it is to govern. And as my colleague Carolyn just said, we're a committee, and we need to be working together as a committee. So whatever happens next, let's move on and continue in the spirit of collaboration that we've all exemplified over the past year.
Sure, if you're ready. So again, this -- we have two nominees for the position of vice chair. When I call on you, you will let me know the name that you're voting for. And we have Ms. McTodder and Dr. Hefter. Suzanne?
Sarah.
Val?
Sarah.
Jessie?
Jessie.
Andy?
Sarah.
Sarah?
Sarah.
Mariah?
I'm voting for Sarah with the respect, huge amount of respect for my colleague Jessie, and a planning to work very closely with him over this year. Thank you.
Donna?
Jessie.
Carolyn?
Jessie.
And Bob?
Sarah.
Okay, so Sarah has been elected our next chair. Vice chair, excuse me.
Yeah, so go wherever, whatever opened up, right?
Betsy, where should I move to? To Sarah's. I need to Sarah's. Just because that opened up.
Yeah, the motion to reappoint you, right? So every year, we need to make a motion to appoint or reappoint our secretary. I just want to say that, Betsy, this is my favorite part, too. Betsy is the hands-down 20-to-zero unanimous vote of the school committee on this one. So I'd like to move to reappoint Betsy Fitzpatrick as the secretary of the school committee.
Seconded.
Suzanne, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yeah.
Jessie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes, with thanks for all the work that we've done together during the past year when Suzanne and I were chair vice chair.
Donna?
Yes.
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Bob?
Oh, yeah.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you. Thank you, Betsy, or another year of punishment. I didn't actually ask if you'd accept that. Next is the consent agenda. Anyone move the consent agenda? We should probably clarify. It does not include... It does not include items 2A1 and 2A2, the grants and gifts. Okay, second?
I'll second.
Suzanne, your vote?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Jessie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Donna?
What am I voting for?
Consent agenda.
Yes.
Do you know what that is?
No.
Sarah?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes, and if people don't know what it is, maybe somebody could explain.
Yeah. Bob?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So for new folks and for anybody at home, the consent agenda, it's our administrative business. It's generally things like past records, so our meeting minutes. It's often approval of grants and gifts, which have gone through the finance committee. Occasionally, it's a vote on a building project that has gone through, generally, both the building commission and that school's building committee. And on this particular administrative business, we had school choice as well. No, that's -- No, sorry, that's separate. That's not on a...
Val, can I ask a question? This is about a procedural thing. So who will be reporting to the committee as needed on the change orders and such going forward? And did anyone happen to do anything?
Andy might have an update on this.
Okay. Or other members, perhaps?
Andy's on the building commission, actually, so.
Yeah, and as far as I know, so is Helen at this point. I don't know exactly what will happen, but the school committee may need to take some action in the near future to get that sorted, since Helen's no longer on the school committee. In the meantime, I'm still on the school building committee.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I would just add that in looking at that actual item, for people's information or for people at home who hadn't looked at it, this is in the removal of some of the material on the lot that's going to become the new Pierce School. There's an area that was discovered under the edge of the wall of the historic Pierce School building that has some columns of brick that hold up the wall, but the columns don't extend far enough down. And as material is being dug below it, there was deemed, from an engineering standpoint, to be somewhat fragile. If they would be leaving it alone, it might actually collapse that part of the section of the wall. And so this is an engineering analysis that has already pretty much been completed to look at putting acceptably large concrete sections underneath it that will support the brick columns of the historic building, so as not to cause any damage. That's what the 5,225 is for.
Thank you, Jessie. Next on our agenda is a possible vote to not participate in the school choice program. So the school choice law is a provision contained in the Ed Reform Act of '93, and it presumes that each school committee will admit non-resident students under the school choice program unless there's a vote to the contrary taken by June 1 of each year following a hearing on the issue. The school committee combined the hearing for school choice with the public hearing on the FY '25 budget, held on February 13, 2025. Brookline has not participated in school choice in the past year, citing the lack of excess capacity in student enrollment. Tonight's agenda includes a possible vote to not participate in school choice for the '25-'26 school year. Is there a motion?
Sure, so moved.
Mariah seconds. Any discussion?
Yes, I would like to speak. I know we have a history of not participating in the school choice program. And I'm not clear about how much capacity we have, but in the context of our fiscal challenges, I might want to open a conversation on the possibility of changing that practice and perhaps achieving some income from the school choice program. So I just want to throw that out.
My recollection, and Susan is, or maybe not here. Oh, no, there you are. I couldn't see you. My recollection, when we talked about this last year, is that the reimbursement rate is low, not -- it's low. And so that was what we talked about it last year, and I can't remember what it is, but it's like 12? Anyway, it's not -- it might not even meet our marginal costs, just FYI. $12,000 per student. It's -- I don't remember what it was, but I was surprised how low it was. I -- that's -- don't take the dollar amount, just it's not... That's fine. Yeah. I mean, so, but it's an interesting conversation, because when we talk about the materials fee program and Metco, we sort of say, like, Metco is $8,000 per student, but we say it's not -- that's not -- we don't expect to be reimbursed. We don't look at it that way. This is in the context of revenue generation. I understand. And so materials fee is a revenue generator. I'm not sure it's a revenue generator. In that it's a recruitment and retention tool primarily, right? And it generates revenue. It does. My point being, when we look at both of those programs and we have those conversations about the sort of per pupil value or what we spend, my understanding is the conversation is always sort of like, well, we don't frame it that way. We don't frame what we do either generally or with either of those programs as a per pupil. So I guess when I hear whether it's $12,000 or $8,000 or $2,000, isn't revenue? Revenue?
$5,000.
You said the school choice is $5,000?
$5,000.
Okay. Can I ask a question, Dr. Gilery? Dr. Gilery? I'm just curious about capacity in the system right now. We have new buildings. Again, this is my first meeting, so I have questions to ask. Like, is there a capacity in any of the buildings or a number of the buildings to accept students? And Mariah, you said it's $5,000? And Mariah, you said it's $5,000 bucks per student? So if we get 50 students from school choice, that's $250,000. It's not nothing, it's not that much, but it's something. I just think we should open our brains to the possibility as we begin, again, to struggle with the fiscal challenges that we face. Dr. Guillory?
Sure. So microphones are proving challenging tonight. As I look at our projections for next year, each school does have available seats. Now, that's keeping in mind the conversation that we have over and over about going up to the guidelines in each of those sections. So at the elementary level, we remember at the K-2 range, that's up to 22, grades 3 through 8, that's up to 25 in those sections. But each school does have available seats, if that's the question.
So if you distribute, I'm just picking this number. If you distribute 50, 60, 70 students, the class sizes probably will not be dramatically affected if we do that. And so I just think we have to look at the bottom line. This would be a change. I just think we have to think of any fiscal alternative to begin to meet the challenges that we have. So I would be open to doing something I think the school committee has never done before, which is to participate in the school choice program.
Can I ask a question, Dr. Guillory? If we accept a student in the school choice, does their sending district, or do we pay for any special education costs or anything related?
I think we would pay, right? The question about is special education services costs if our students, yeah.
Yeah, so like our other programs where we accept students, we get whatever the amount we receive, or whether it's material fees, or in this case, it would be school choice. And then we hold that seat for that student until they graduate. One of the challenges I see here, and I'm not opposed to, I've been in school choice districts, but one of the things I do see that's different here in Brookline is the churn. And so, and you probably are very familiar with the churn, Dr. Weinprep, but you can't control where the seats are going to be next year, because we have migration, in-migration and out-migration at a pace that I haven't seen in other school districts. And so if we hold a seat, let's say for somebody entering in kindergarten, we have churn that then negatively impacts the number of students that are available in that particular grade that they're going into. It creates some challenges for us. So I think that's one of the things that you should consider as we think about opening up seats or bringing additional students that are non-Brookline students into our community. Also, as Val says, stated so well, is that we'll get $5,000 for that student. Our per pupil cost was listed most recently as $26,000, and that's just the average cost. And then, of course, any additional costs that they need for supports would also be a cost that we'd have to account for.
Has that $5,000 been in place forever?
Seems like.
So, I mean, school choice has been in place for what?
Yeah.
Many, many years. That's outrageously...
It really is.
...number. It discourages communities to participate in this, and it discourages us from, again, using it as a possible way to help our fiscal situation.
Sarah?
Now, would you anticipate that being any different for, like, so if in Winthrop House we're able to offer somebody a space that they paid for, is that a separate issue in that we wouldn't hold on to that seat? And also, it wouldn't be reimbursed only at $5,000? Are we able to sell spots in our special programs for more? Is it a separate situation?
We talked about this during the, sorry, I'll jump in. We talked about this during the budget discussions, and I think Dr. Schmuckler said Winthrop House, was it Winthrop House? Or the, it is Winthrop at Driscoll, and hopefully the Adaptive Learning Center at Lincoln? Potentially...
To answer, I think, your question, we can set the tuition rate for those programs, unlike these types of reimbursement programs. So, of course...
What I'm also curious is, then, do you hold on to the student all the way through 12th grade? Or is it a situation for that particular year?
I don't actually know the answer to that question. I think if we have a continuum of programming, likely we'd keep them here and charge. But if we had in-house, one thing I do know about that, because I have had programs like that before, is that if our student body needed those seats, we would not have to continue to offer those seats to other students, unless the law has changed.
Wouldn't we have to if someone was there and they had stay-put rights? We couldn't move them out, right?
Potentially. I think that's a, Dr. Schmuckler would probably be better able to answer that question.
Can you set a limit on the number of students you accept as part of school choice?
I do believe that when you elect school choice, that you do determine the number of seats, and my recollection is it's by lottery, that you would fill those. And by grade, if my recollection is, it's been a number of years since I've done school choice, but that's how I recall it working.
Any other comment before we take a vote? Start this way. Bob?
Could you just, I'm sorry, could you just say what a yes vote means?
The question is framed as not participating. So a yes vote is we don't...
Not going to participate.
Correct.
Thank you.
I'll vote no.
Okay. Carolyn?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Donna?
Sorry, can you clarify, a yes vote means you are, we are not participating? Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Jessie?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
All right. Good evening, everyone. We're going to go through our Spotlight on Excellence so that we can get to our superintendent's report. And Mr. Stoddart, we will be able to share the presentation from here. So for tonight, I want to give an update on the NIASK visit to BHS. BHS had a very successful decennial visit from the New England Association of Schools and Colleges accreditation team from Monday, April 14th through Wednesday, April 16th. This was a follow-up from their visit two years ago of their collaborative conference. BHS worked with the original team and NIASK Director of Accreditation to identify several priority areas of improvement at BHS. One foundational element of the accreditation is school safety and security, and the planning and implementation of BHS Access Control System deeply impressed the decennial visit team, I want to say decennial. Their memorable quote from 2023 was, "This is a beautiful school and campus, now lock it." BHS has succeeded in doing this while allowing access to students, staff, families, and visitors. There are three other areas where BHS has made substantial progress, developing a multi-tiered system of support, including major progress on the BCAP plan. This will go live on our district and high school websites well in advance of the '25-'26 school year, so at some point later this year, as I'm sure they're working on that now. Working on a common curriculum format within and across departments, as well as more common assessment practices and structures. These intra- and cross-departmental efforts began this year and will continue the next two to three years. They've structured and focused professional learning that helps teachers develop a core of strong instructional assessment and student support approaches, practices, and strategies. This was declared a focus area in 2023, and the decennial visiting team was impressed by the progress made on providing professional development and professional learning for educators. One area that needs to be tracked with urgency in the next year is a district-wide vision of a graduate. The visiting team helped us think about ways this could look and be done efficiently and effectively. Overall, this was a great visit. The Director of Accreditation has asked the Head of School, Meyer, Social Studies Curriculum Coordinator, Jen Martin, and English Curriculum Coordinator, John Andrews, to present at the NIASK Board of Directors meeting this Friday. State leaders will plan to visit the BHS lunch program in the coming month, between now and the end of the school year. The Massachusetts Department of Secondary Education, state legislators, school nutrition directors, and members of the Massachusetts School Meal Nutrition Standards Commission have requested to visit the lunch program at BHS due to the outstanding work of the PSB Food Services Department. The purpose of their tour is to illustrate the impact of investment in universal free meals, as well as wrap up the 24-25 School Meal Nutrition Standards Commission. The tour will include opportunities to interact with students, taste school meal samples, and see Brookline's fantastic school nutrition program in action. PSB shines at the Music Parks Festival. Last Friday, May 8th, 140 PSB students across grades 5 through 8 took top honors at the Music in the Parks Festival held in Six Flags in Agawam, Massachusetts. The event featured a high number of competing music groups with schools from Massachusetts, Connecticut, and New York. Here's how our groups performed. Voices of Brookline, our townwide chorus directed by Rhiann Gibson, with the company Melody Lenhart earned first place. Brookline Youth Orchestra, directed by John Ferguson with Assistant Director Irina Naraschikova, earned first place, received a superior rating, the highest possible, and was named the Best Overall Middle School Orchestra. Our townwide concert band, directed by Emmy Hardy and with Assistant Director Rick Stone, earned an excellent rating and placed fourth. And then our townwide jazz band, directed by Rick Stone with Assistant Director Kenny Cozal, earned an excellent rating and placed second. A special thank you to our passionate and dedicated music teachers who led the trip, Kenny Cozal, Rick Stone, Emmy, John, Irina, Rhiann, and Melody, as well as our Performing Arts Secretary, Sonya Joyner, who helped manage the many logistics to make this event a success. And before we go to our Spotlight on Excellence, I do want to give the community and the committee an update regarding a complaint that was filed about BHS and their structured learning time. So a community member filed a PRS complaint, which is a Problem Resolution System complaint with DESI, asserting that the BHS days of, and this is like their, the various days of events that BHS has, programs and advisory do not qualify as structured learning time. This included Z Block, which many of you know is the before-school time for, I guess, conservatory prep time. So this is Z Block, Impact, T Block, and X Block, in that students were not getting their 990 hours of structured learning time. PRS reviewed the complaint, affirmed that the high school days of, so the doors events do qualify as structured learning time, as well as the advisory portion counts as structured learning time. The complaint, however, prompted DESI to conduct a deeper dive into the BHS schedule through the structured learning time lens. PRS found that Brookline High School to be short of the required 990 hours by approximately 60 hours or less, noting that the current configuration of X Block does not count towards structured learning time, and Z Block is not part of the mandatory school days, as reported by the district, because not all students are participating in that. Both of these blocks have been in the BHS schedule for 15 years or more, and I'm sure Bob knows more about their origin. I have charged the high school administration team to come into compliance with the 990-hour requirement by revising or developing a schedule that meets or exceeds the 990-hour requirement. BHS will engage in the corrective action process to meet a July 11th deadline to create a revised schedule that must be submitted to DESI. Creating a new schedule will have ramifications on the structure of the bell schedule for the '25-'26 school year, the master schedule, and the availability of some classes. There is no action required for the current school year, the current school schedule. BHS will keep us posted on their progress, and given that this information was communicated this week from DESI, the BHS team will work as quickly as possible towards a viable solution. And with that, that concludes the superintendent's report, and we have now our Pierce team online to share with us the Spotlight on Excellence, and I'm happy to answer any questions once the Pierce team.
Sorry, may I ask a question? Do you mind clarifying? You said...
I'm going, I'm going to have to interrupt. I'm sorry. If you could please hold the questions for that till later. We are...
Absolutely.
Time crunch.
Absolutely.
I was told that we would be able to be done by 6:45. I need to leave very shortly to get to a performance. So I respectfully ask if we could just move right now to the Pierce School Spotlight on Excellence?
Are you?
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry for that. Thank you for inviting us to present here about our Black History Month Door Project. Jandy Strong-Dennis, our Metco liaison, came to me with a wonderfully creative idea that she had for our students to learn about and celebrate Black history. We shared it with our staff, who immediately embraced the idea, and when we rolled it out to the students, they ran with it, making it such an authentic learning experience for the Pierce middle school community. Jandy will tell more, and then we'll watch a video that highlights the students' work with Stephanie Goodman and Lucy McNeil, two of our wonderful sixth-grade teachers, providing commentary, especially since I'm not sure the audio is going to be able to work on what we're about to share. So with that, I'll just pass it over to Jandy.
Thank you, Jim. Hi, everyone. I'm, kids refer to me as Miss Ron Dennis. I'm the Metco advisor at Pierce. So the door decorating contest was an initiative meant to bring everyone together. I want our students to immerse themselves into valuable lessons that remind us that Black history is American history, showcasing resilience, perseverance, and their ongoing struggle for justice. After all, a complete understanding of American history requires the contribution and experiences of Black people. Embracing their "it takes a village" approach, I propose a door decorating contest that will bring together students, staff, and the Metco families. Each homeroom class created door decorations featuring Black history art and facts driven by students' ideas. Their judges included teachers, custodians, paraprofessionals, and parents. Their winning class will be rewarded a special meal featuring Liberian, West African, and soul food. It was amazing and educational experience for everyone. Thank you. And I'm going to pass it over to Stephanie Goodman.
Yeah, so I think now we are going to try to watch...
The video, yes.
Okay.
Six years as a class were tremendously hard to complete the door art project. We landed on the idea of Bill Russell, and wanted to elaborate on the idea of Black Americans associated with the color green. When we didn't think of any other option, we decided to focus on the incredible Bill Russell. We focused on his great achievements and went for the graffiti style of art. We took ideas from Gene Michael Buss with, another groundbreaking... We took ideas from Gene Michael Best with another groundbreaking Black American who is known for his graffiti style. To make the, to make the overall image, just like, just like Bill, just like Bill would, come onto the court with the game thing, we came into the classroom with great ideas and put together the masterpiece on the, on our door.
This is Bill Russell, and he was the first Black head coach in the NBA in modern North American sports. And he was also a President Medal Awarded by President Obama in 2011. And we have more stuff here to scan, and a video, a music video.
Wise words from Bill Russell. The most important thing to me is the friends that are made. Joy is a current of energy in your body, like a chlorophyll with sunlight that fills you up and makes you naturally want to do your best. You can do anything you want to do if you want it badly. The most important thing is to be true to yourself.
Hello, this is HC's Black History Door. We decided to have a lot of Black people that were influential and important. We did a bunch of different, like, some drawings, some pictures. There's like a mural down here, so it'd like look different, tried to like fill in the space with different quotes and stuff.
This is my drawing of Obama, and he is the 44th American President. And I like one of his quotes very much. Change will not come if we, if we wait for something other people or some other time. We are the only ones being waiting for. We are the change we seek.
So this is my drawing of Harriet Tubman, and I drew her holding a torch, sort of like the Statue of Liberty, but you'll notice that all of the other areas are very dark since she usually went under the cover of night, and she actually might not have had a torch in many cases, but as I said, I was inspired by the Statue of Liberty.
So this is our mural. We decided to do kind of a, like, a thing with connections, so Henry. Yeah, so here we have Kenan Kumar, who's a rapper, and he's rapping about Basquiat.
Hey, you know, here we have Basquiat, you know, he's a painter, and he is painting Drew Holiday.
Yeah. And, yeah, we have Drew, a mural of Drew Holiday. And one quote from Drew Holiday that we wrote right here was, having your voice heard makes you feel more involved.
Hi, I'm Mariah.
I'm Shae. Our door includes quotes from Frederick Douglass in orange, Harriet Tubman in green, and Martin Luther King Jr. in blue.
We chose this for our door because these people were influential in preventing the suffering that so many people of African descent used to experience. Harriet Tubman helped enslave people, journey of freedom.
Martin Luther King Jr. helped people with his words.
As did Frederick Douglass with his words and actions.
Now we will read some of the quotes to you aloud.
"The soul that is within me, no man can degrade," by Frederick Douglass.
"Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere," by Martin Luther King Jr.
"I never ran my train off the track, and I never lost a pass in it," by Harriet Tubman.
Hi, everybody. This is our Catherine Johnson, made by 6O. This, this, this door was made by Moana, Olivia, Vera, unfortunately Kristen's not here today, and also Senna, and also I.
We drew Catherine Johnson climbing up and reaching to the stars, and in those little stars you'll see quotes and fun facts.
Catherine Johnson was a master math teacher.
On one of the clouds, there are more fun facts about Catherine Johnson. Where she was born in White Sulphur Springs, West Virginia, on August 26, 1918, a little bit about her and her early days and when she was 15.
We chose Catherine Johnson because we found she was very inspiring, because even though she was African-American, there was a lot of discrimination, she was still able to fight her truth, to become one of our Piers Math and Math teacher candidates.
Ms. Goodman, Ms. McNeil, were you all gonna add to?
Yeah, I can add a few things. Just as you saw from the video, the kids got really excited about it, and that was like from grade six through eight. And my kids did the Bill Russell door, and just a couple of things about it. My, when my kids said they wanted to do Bill Russell and Basquiat, I was like, I don't know that this is gonna work, but it ended up working really well. There was a lot of collaboration, and they worked together, and each kid really took a part and took ownership over that, so it was nice to see the learning and also that problem-solving skill, which was really nice to see in, you know, February, when, you know, things start to feel a little tougher at school and everything. So it was a really great experience for the kids and teachers as well. So, and Lucy, if you want to add a little thing?
Yeah, thanks, Steph. So it was so exciting, I feel like, when Jandy came with the idea to us, and it was like really fun as a committee, like figuring out what we wanted to do and what resources we could give. So each homeroom in the morning would have like a little mini lesson, or like a question or a song, or a video they could look at and have discussions about, and then it ended right with this, the month ended with this project that the kids were working on. They really all, like collaborated and got so into it that it was like you would have to like tear them apart from the project to move into the day. Even like, I remember at one point, they were all working on their portraits so hard that they were like, Ms. McNeil, you need to color this overnight for homework so that we can get this on the door. So they were really into it, and it was like such a cool committee that Jandy brought together, so I'm super grateful to work with them.
Thank you all very much. So our Spotlight on Excellence from the Public Schools of Brookline is awarded to the Piers School Black History Month Door Decorating Contest in recognition of Stephanie Goodman, Lucy McNeil, and Jandy Dennis Strong for spearheading this project, which encouraged students to work creatively and collaboratively to deepen their understanding of the rich history and many contributions of African-Americans to our country. Congratulations to the Piers team. And thank you all for being here with us tonight.
Thank you.
Next up, we have public comment.
Val, can I just, can I, oh, sorry about that. Make a comment?
Suzanne.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment, and that is, you know, I just want to do another shout-out to our middle school program. It is not easy to bring eight schools together. Both the families, the parents, the kids, they come together, they don't know each other really, because they're at different schools, and our staff does an amazing job of bringing them together and having them perform. So I just, another shout-out to them. It's, you know, we have this pre-K to eight model, which we love, but it also offers some challenges, but it also offers extra opportunities, and I think that in our music area, performance area, they do a great job. Special thank you to that group.
Any other comments? Donna?
Hi, yeah, I'll echo Suzanne's gratitude. That was really lovely. I wanted to go back to the conversation about the PRS complaint. Can you just clarify, was, we were short 60 hours, or I think you said X and Z, is that?
Approximately 60 hours over the course of the year.
Okay, and that includes both of those blocks?
T.
Oh, it was T?
T.
Okay.
Yep. T-
X was-
T Block.
Yeah.
The high school was counting Z Block, but Z Block doesn't count towards that 990.
And X does count towards the 990, right?
X counts, T doesn't.
And do you know if there'll be a notice going out to the BHS community about that?
I'm sure, and I will communicate.
Thank you.
I have a question, too.
Okay, Mariah, and then Carolyn.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
Um, I think it might be the other way around with X and T, but that's okay. Anyway, so I wanted to just say, Linus, how much I enjoyed the presentation, what you mentioned, Suzanne, and just, I was so struck by just these like moments of wonderful excellence that we've heard, and between the, the performing arts program that was highlighted, but also the fabulousness that Sasha Palmer and the Food Services Team are getting recognized by the state. I wonder, I don't know which legislators were invited, but I wonder if perhaps, I don't know, like, you know, as we're going through the budget cycle and the universal meals program is, wants to be funded, you know, are there other people, the governor, the lieutenant governor, who might be able to be invited, or even us could come so that we could also be there. So whatever we could do to be supportive of Sasha for that event, or however else, but I just think it's wonderful that, that that team is being recognized as well. And then I thought the Piers Doors project was lovely, too. So what a wonderful presentation you gave to us, and thank you for giving us these moments, these glimpses into the days of our schools.
I would just say there's a May 20th, something at Tappan, at 5:30, for, for food, for the food services. Well, that's a place we, we are invited. We got the invitation, so, okay.
Carolyn?
I'm gonna go back to what Dr. Gillery was describing with the high school. So Dr. Gillery, I think you said that there is the potential for this to impact classes that could be offered. Can you explain that a little bit?
I won't be able to go into grave detail because the high school is working on it as such, but given that we're talking about probably starting the school day a little bit earlier is what it's going to amount to, is what I suppose, or surmise, and then looking at the high school will have to put together what offerings will be available as such, but I will have them give us more details around that, but I won't try to pre-build their schedule, but I know it will have an impact.
Okay. I'll be interested to hear that. I can't translate in my mind how adding time would mean offering, not being able to offer certain classes, so I will watch for that.
Can I, I-
Bob?
I can comment on that, if you, should I?
Please. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I was the one who designed the schedule that's there, and we created the conservatory period Z Block so that we would isolate the performing arts classes, so they wouldn't have to conflict with all the other classes in the school. So what's gonna happen, and Dr. Gillery is correct, the school day will probably begin a little bit earlier, maybe 8 o'clock, instead of 8:20. And the, so the only challenge that I would see is that because the conservatory block was isolating performing arts classes, that it'll be a little more challenging to get all the kids in those, in those performing arts classes during the regular school day.
I think it's also beyond performing arts. Bob, my son, for instance, took Wellness Z Block so that he could take an art class each semester, so I think that there are different, a few things now that are offered in Z. Andy?
Would starting the school day earlier be something that requires collective bargaining?
So the, the high school has notified the union of this impact as well, and we'll learn more as they dig into this, but I'm sure there will be some form of, a notion of a change to their current experience.
Anyone else on this? Okay, so now we're moving to public comment, and just so folks are aware who are gonna be giving public comment, we limit it to three minutes, we listen attentively, but we generally don't respond or have a back and forth, just so you know, we're listening, we're taking it in, but our practice is not to have a back and forth. First up, I see lots of Driscoll red, so hi to my friends from Driscoll. Emma Garmes is first up.
Thank you. Wait, uh, okay. Hello, my name is Emma Garmes. I am in seventh grade, and I go to the Driscoll School. When I heard that Ms. Crowe was not going to be at Driscoll next year due to budget cuts, so many feelings filled my mind, but the biggest thought that popped into my brain was how is Driscoll going to function with just one vice principal? A few months ago, some of my friends and I were targeted by homophobic comments. When I, when this happened, I went right to Ms. Crowe and explained the situation. She listened to how we were feeling and then talked to the other students involved to let them know that what they did was wrong. I think that would be very challenging for a single vice principal to have the time to make these types of changes when they have so much other work to do. It would also be very hard for a single vice principal to know all the students enough for them to feel comfortable for their, for this type of personal conversation. Also, think about how different kindergartners and first graders are to middle schoolers. It'd be a lot to ask someone to deal with breaking up a fight between who gets the swing next, and also dealing with older kids who could be dealing with anxiety and depression. It would be really challenging. Ms. Crowe has, has to do so much for the Driscoll community, and planning events for all the middle school is already hard enough. Think about adding six more grades to that. This probably means that each grade won't get their full attention. Thank you so much for hearing me out. That's it.
Thank you, Emma. Next up is Jonathan Golden, and Ms. Pritchard's on deck.
Good evening, Jonathan Golden, Town Meeting Member, Prestige 11. I want to start by congratulating the Chair and the Vice Chair on your election this evening, Val, on your reelection. Welcome to Dr. Bob and to Donna to the school committee, and also really want to take this opportunity publicly to thank Dr. Gillery for his service to our town. I'm a Driscoll parent and former member of the Driscoll School Site Council. I am also a former Assistant Head of School and Director of Academic Operations at a local private high school. While my sweatshirt says Driscoll, I stand before you today as a proud member of Team Brookline, not to be confused with the Boston Marathon Group from our community, but all of us know that work in schools is a marathon, not a sprint. I thank the extraordinary efforts of the school committee to resolve an $8 million deficit. I truly marvel how each of you can devote multiple hours a week to school committee service for no compensation. My admiration only grows greater given the predicament of this year's budget cycle, as you discussed yesterday even in your finance subcommittee meeting. As a proud member of Team Brookline, I stand before you to support David Euclid, my principal, and all principals in Brookline, who often do not have the resources and supports that they need to deliver on their educational vision. As a proud member of Team Brookline, I stand before you proudly as a parent of a school that houses five B classrooms and a winter past program. Six years ago, this community worked together to build a new Driscoll school. As a Driscoll parent, I am forever grateful. The new Driscoll school override meant the fiscal responsibility to add sections to Driscoll and build capacity to the system as a whole. Whatever the financial solution is on this issue, let us not let a $130,000 position impact the growth of the Driscoll school population and all the programs housed there. Finally, as a proud member of Team Brookline, I want to do all that I can to support both our new interim superintendent and permanent superintendent. Leadership turnover is an epidemic in Brookline because we, all of us, are falling short in our teamwork among us, parents, teachers, students, administrators, and the school committee. What can all of us do here to change that dynamic and improve that sense of teamwork? For those who know me well, I am not asking a rhetorical question. I am ready to roll up my sleeves and do my part to make the public schools of Brookline a preferred destination for future school leaders. I hope you will join me in making that dream a reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. Heather Pritchard is next, and Ms. Sultani is on deck.
Hi, my name is Heather Pritchard, and I teach sixth and seventh grade social studies at Driscoll. Last week, I learned that Michelle Crowe, one of our vice principals, is being reassigned to another school in the district. Michelle's reassignment is a consequence of the school committee's vote to reduce one VP position in the district to close the budget deficit. I don't believe that the loss of a VP position at Driscoll, and Michelle in particular, is actually sustainable for our school. How can I support? That's the question Michelle Crowe is always asking teachers at Driscoll. When teachers are focused on helping their students feel seen and heard, Michelle ensures that the teacher she works with feels seen and heard. Michelle is a mainstay presence on the fourth floor, where most of our middle school classrooms are located in our new building. From her makeshift second office in what was originally designed as a small group student workspace, Michelle does the intensive, behind-the-scenes work required for team building. Michelle's leadership has enabled us to develop a middle school culture in which our students are held to consistent and high expectations, and this is a culture in which they can find support and a sense of belonging. Michelle's days are thus often filled with tasks we may not typically associate with a middle school vice principal. She mails postcards. Teachers have written to their students- She mails postcards teachers have written to their students so they can receive words of encouragement and affirmation. She handplaces kids in groups for Arts Equinox field trips so students can have choice and voice in how they spend their time. She covers classes when we don't have enough substitute teachers in the building. She follows up with students when they've transgressed community norms to help them understand the impact of their actions on others. She troubleshoots technology challenges with our educational technology specialist. She trains staff in de-escalation strategies to help us support all students and improve the safety of our school. And she attends trainings for the new eighth grade social studies curriculum through the Democratic Knowledge Project. None of these things will happen if Michelle is transferred away from her crucial, crucial position at Driscoll. Given Driscoll's current needs, two administrators cannot do the work necessary to keep our school safe for students. We know this because we know what it was like to only have two administrators. It meant there was not always an immediate and effective response to emergent student needs. It meant that students sometimes walked into classrooms that literally had no adult in them. I am aware that the school committee has already approved a budget for this coming school year that does not include a second VP position at Driscoll. Nevertheless, I am hoping that they and members of the Brookline community can use the information that we, members of the Driscoll community tonight, are sharing to advocate for action from members of Town Meeting to fund the second vice principal position at Driscoll. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Pritchard. Lisa Soltani, Soltani, and then Lee Simons on deck.
I'm Lisa Soltani. I teach sixth and seventh grade math at Driscoll. I'm a former Hayes, at that time Heath, parent. And I just want to read a quote. "When a ship is sinking, there is value in knowing how fast and calling it out." George Saunders wrote these words the other day in the New York Times, and I took them to heart. So that's what I'm hoping to do here. When I returned to Driscoll last fall, we were down a special educator. The position had been trimmed from our middle school, and its effects were really immediately felt by everyone in the middle school staff. Eventually, we adjusted to the new reality, but today we are all a bit wearier for it. And now we face another cut to Driscoll staff, the middle school. This time, Michelle Crowe, our middle school principal. And I truly worry about the loss of this incredibly talented, hardworking, effective, empathetic, passionate, and relentlessly positive administrator. Not merely one fewer adult in the building, but one fewer powerhouse of an adult. I am grateful that at least some other school will benefit from Michelle's singular talent, but educators really aren't fungible in that way. Our work, when done well, is about relationships. And this cut means severing those relationships, relationships that take years to build, especially when we're dealing with families whose children have really complex needs. David Euclid and Melissa Lyons are both incredibly capable and effective leaders in their own right, but how can one expect that they just pile onto their already full plates all that Michelle does? Asking that they each do a job and a half is just untenable, and the reality is that things simply won't get done. And as such, they won't be the only ones feeling the fallout from this cut. Every teacher, staff, and our students will feel these knock-on effects. And in the end, we will all be just a little bit wearier for it. You know, I know there's, it feels like there isn't a choice, that we have to make these cuts and eliminate programs, shuffle people around. We ended ECS. Elementary world language is gone. The Office of Education Equity is cut. EL teaching remains understaffed. And it'll be fine, right? We'll muddle through. We always do. But I'm just asking, is fine good enough? Many of you may think that I'm just another whiny, catastrophizing teacher blind to the fiscal realities facing the town, but I pay those taxes too. And I join Heather in asking you, perhaps, to be mindful that maybe you are the blind ones, blind to the cumulative effects of all these cuts year after year. And I'm joining Heather in asking you to help us work with Town Meeting and make an amendment to this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Soltani. Lee is up. And Orlie's on deck.
Thank you. My name is Lee Simons. I am a Driscoll Site Council member and the parent of a second grader at Driscoll, who is very patiently waiting in the audience. And I want to thank all of you first for your time and effort serving our community and our children always, but particularly in this challenging budget time. Like my fellow Driscoll parents and other community members, I'm here to provide comment on next year, but next year's budget's elimination of one of two Driscoll vice principal positions. I know the school committee has prioritized maintaining student-facing positions. The Driscoll vice president, vice principals, excuse me, are decidedly student-facing, supporting students directly, as well as supporting teachers with student needs. As I know many of you are aware, Driscoll is the school with three of the biggest K through eight classrooms in the district. And there are many other Driscoll classes with student-teacher ratios at the high end of district recommendations. Large class sizes mean more need for teacher support from the vice principal. And Driscoll is a growing school. It's currently three sections, but as you know, is built as a four-section school, with at least one grade, if not more, already warranting a four section. We also house the middle school Winthrop House pilot, which I understand the district wants to expand. As a former PTO co-chair of BEEP, I'm thrilled that Driscoll has welcomed BEEP classes back into the school building. With five classes, it's the largest K through eight school-based BEEP site and the same size as the freestanding BEEP sites. All of this enrollment growth at K through eight BEEP and the small middle school Winthrop House program has meant enrollment at Driscoll has grown 25% between 2022 and 2025. And it will be even larger as a four-section school when we will undoubtedly need our second vice principal even more at that size. It seems short-sighted to remove that institutional knowledge now, right at the cusp of when we will be a four-section school. Before our amazing current principal, Driscoll cycled through a new principal every one to two years. At those times, we only had one vice principal, and the reason for departure of those principals prominently included burnout and work-life balance as a result of the high demands of the job and lack of support. I'd like to make one final point. This decision to eliminate a vice principal at one of the K through eight schools occurred in early March, before we learned of the upcoming changes to the superintendent and deputy superintendent roles. It's even more important now that we ensure the individual schools have the resources they need to support our students, educators, and school leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Orlie. Orlie's online. Hi, Orlie.
Yeah, how are you? Thank you. My name is Orlie. I am a parent at Florida Raffineried Ridley, and this is my second time speaking on the subject, and it is about keeping five sections in second grade in FRR. Last time I spoke from my heart, and then I noticed that everyone else reads things. So this time, I'm just going to read the letter that was sent to the school committee. I think it kind of captures the sentiment. So we're writing as concerned parents, community members, in a stronger position to the decision to eliminate a second grade teaching position at FRR, reducing the number of classes from five to four for the 2025 school, 2025 school year. Over the past several weeks, many FRR families have voiced deep concern about this change through letters, outreach, and participation in meetings. Despite this input, the decision to move forward with the reduction has gone forward. Reducing second grade sections from five to four will result, will result in significantly larger class sizes, currently projected at 22 students per class and likely higher. This projection does not account for families moving to FRR zone over the summer. Historically, 10 to 15 new students join each year. Families on the border of two zones who choose FRR. New students in the EL or TLC programs who are placed at FRR. A recent community survey has already identified at least 12 new families relocating to the FRR district. Many are coming from abroad and will need additional support to transition smoothly. The loss of a fifth section and the educator leading it, Ms. Brooks, will directly, will directly impact the school's ability to serve these students. Second grade is a foundational year, building critical reading, writing, and thinking skills. Our children have already experienced instability in both kindergarten and first grade, including mid-year teacher changes. They need consistency, not additional strain from overcrowded classrooms and reduced attention. Letting go of Ms. Brooks would be a profound loss. She's not only a skilled and compassionate educator, but she's uniquely equipped to support our multilingual and multicultural student body. In just two years, she has made a lasting impact on both students and families. Moreover, it is well-known how difficult it is, now more than ever, to recruit and retain highly qualified, passionate educators. When we lose a great teacher, we don't just lose a staff member, we lose institutional knowledge, continuity, and trusted relationships that cannot be easily replaced. This is not simply a staffing decision. It is a choice that will shape the educational environment at FRR for years to come. At a time of broader transition, including a new principal and superintendent, we urge you to protect stability where it matters most, in the classroom. We strongly urge you to reconsider this decision. Maintaining five second grade sections at FRR is an investment in our children's education, well-being, and equitable access to support. Thank you for your time and continued commitment to the Brookline students, concerned FRR parents.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. We're skipping number five and moving to number six, school committee actions, discussion and possible vote on BEEP extended day fees. Mariah, is this you?
Yes. Sorry, you said we're skipping Q3 report, right? Yes. Okay, because we'll do it next week. Okay. So last, last, last night at Finance, we discussed, do you have that slide, Betsy? Thank you. We discussed a possible reconsideration of the vote on the BEEP extended day tuition. So if you all recall, and as Betsy has helpfully prepared in a historical slide, in January, we voted to increase the BEEP extended day tuition by $200 a month. And at that time, the memo we received said that the tuition was $800 a month. Since then, we, we discovered that there was a typo actually in the memo, and the extended day tuition is $700 a month. So the proposal is, instead of the original vote, which Betsy has there in the second paragraph, to increase it to $1,000 a month next year, 1,200 a month the year after that, and 1,400 a month the year after that, it would be by $100 less each year, so 900, 1,100, and 1,300. And the finance subcommittee voted unanimously? Did we vote unanimously? Yes. To, to, on the motion that's the last paragraph here and that we're recommending to the full school committee tonight. The impact of this would be that parents who participate or families that participate in the extended day program, of which I believe there are approximately 30, would each pay $100 a month less, which is $1,000 a year less. And financially, the 200, the, the increased funding to the program that is required for our budget was based on the $200 a month increase, and so the program finances are intact. We're just adjusting the original base amount to the correct base amount. So I'm going to make a motion that school committee vote to set the BEEP extended day tuition rates at $900 a month in '26, 1,100 a month in '27, and 1,300 a month in '28, as is written in the last paragraph on the slide.
Second.
Any discussion? Jessie seconds. Suzanne?
Yeah, I hate to kind of bring this up, but the fees do still seem high, I know. But I'm just asking some clarifying questions. Is, with BEEP programs in our schools, do they still have separate extended day tuition rates, or can they participate in the school's extended day?
My recollection is that this is only for two sites, at Lynch and maybe at Putterham, which are the standalone sites, which don't, because the one, Beep at Beacon participates in, what is it, Ohabeh Shalom's, yep, extended day. And the other, and Heath participates in that extended day. And I believe Heath maybe covers, no, because anyways, it covers, I believe, Lynch and Putterham.
Putterham.
Yes, that's my recollection.
And is this in alliance with the other extended day programs in terms of the amount?
No.
Okay.
But there's, the, the PSB programming, if you recall, we had Schools for Children that was doing this before, and with the change in the school day, Schools for Children elected to, to exit the partnership.
Right.
And Margaret and Susan, forgive me if I'm saying anything horribly wrong right now. Feel free to come up and correct me. But the, I think one key difference is that the BEEP extended day program is run by unionized staff and the, who have full benefits under the PSB programming. And so the cost structure is slightly different than perhaps the program that, that an extended day would run.
Okay. So you, so you actually penalized a little bit for if you happen to be at Putterham or at Lynch, I mean, just because of your location, because the program is different in extended day.
I don't know that I would frame it as penalized, but...
Well, I bet the families know.
Well, I mean, I don't know. I mean, I guess...
It costs more.
Your finance, you're saying it costs more.
It costs more.
Right, okay. I wouldn't say penalized, but costs more.
Okay. There's nothing we can do about that?
The, when we talked about this last night, we talked about that the $700 a month rate right now barely covers the staff, it just a little bit more than covers the staff salaries. It does not cover, I think it's $655 a month covers staff salaries, but it's closer to almost, it's over $12,500 total per student. So there's actually quite a big difference. And even at these prices, we are not covering the total cost of the program. It's only a little more than half of the cost of the program. So there is some question about the long term, and we talked about this yesterday, the long-term viability of the program, given this discrepancy. But I think in particular, Margaret was very sensitive to supporting the families who had joined with extended day when we had Schools for Children and didn't want that to be a loss.
Any other?
Thank you.
Bob?
Yeah. Is the BEEP extended day program same hours as the regular extended day program?
More or less. It's 2:30 to 5:30, and most of the extended days end somewhere between 5:30 and 6:00, I believe.
And is there any scholarship money available?
BEEP in general has scholarship, and I believe it also would apply to this, but I couldn't tell you. Do you know, Susan, does the scholarship, I presume it also applies to extended day? She's nodding.
Is BEEP free, the regular program?
No.
How much is that?
Can't remember, it's, I can't remember what we voted. Sorry, Susan, do you remember? I could get you that number afterwards, but I don't have it right here right now.
So the extended, so we're asking parents to pay about $10,000 a year for extended day, BEEP?
Yep, $9,000 a year for extended day. Yep.
That's a lot of money.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. You moved it, was there a second? Jessie, I think Jessie seconded. Okay. Suzanne, how do you vote?
Yeah, I'm going to vote no. I just, it just feels like too much money somehow. I...
Mariah?
Yes.
Jessie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Next is the discussion and possible vote to approve extra compensation hourly rates and stipends. Mariah, back to you.
Okay, so in your packet, somewhere in here, somewhere in my packet, one moment. Well, I can talk to it, I don't need to, that's okay. Here it is. I just like to have a prop in my hand. So in your packet, you have the non-aligned extra compensation hourly rates and stipends. And to summarize the conversation we had yesterday, and to also take you to hearken back in time to June 2024, which was the last time we talked about the previous iteration of this document. So two years ago, Susan and the A and F team and OTL and OSS did a Herculean effort to try and finally identify the exhaustive, comprehensive, complete list of non-aligned extra compensation hourly rates and stipends. And so that's what this list was in 2024. And at that time, we had voted it in May of 2024, and then we revoted it to make a couple of tweaks, but one of them, which I will highlight because it came up yesterday, was to change the rate for the ESY coordinators from 7,500 to 8,800 last year. And last night at the meeting, the document was presented, it's equivalent to the June 2024 document with one change, which is the ESY coordinator's salary was included at 12,500, which is an increase from last year's number. which is an increase from last year's number. So it went from 8,800 to 12,500. In the conversation we had yesterday, there was a lot of discussion about... The primary discussion was about some of the work that we had requested, that we had all hoped, we had all collaboratively discussed, would hopefully happen this year because there's some, perhaps, different rates that aren't really clear. What is the right rate to be set for different things? How... Why is there discrepancies? How are they based on effort? Are they based on time spent? There's just a lot of questions we have. Unfortunately, although everyone was very excited to have those happen, that analysis happened this year due to all the different things that have happened that didn't happen. So the document itself really carries forward, except for the 12,500. Last night, when we were talking about this, we moved... We were confused about whether the 12,500 was last year's rate or not, and we had a long discussion about that. So the committee voted to recommend to the full committee this entire document minus the ESY coordinator rate. However, with the additional information about the $3,700 increase year-on-year that is incorporated in the budget pursues in the 12,500, I personally would feel comfortable recommending the full document. But that... Just to be clear, the committee voted the entire document minus this one point because we weren't clear on that. And I personally am going to move the entire document as it stands. The one edit we made last night was just to include BCBA in the ESY first row, PSB Special Education Teachers and Specialists. For some reason, BCBA was not included. And so we're just making sure that BCBA goes into that first row. So that's the motion. Is the motion clear? This document as is with BCBA written in?
Is there a second?
And I would just add, before we get to any other discussion and vote, that I see this, again, with the enthusiasm of the committee and staff of a multi-year plan towards really getting these to be well-documented and analyzed so that we have a really strong basis for understanding the rates.
Okay. Andy seconded. Is there a discussion? Jessie?
Yes. My question is, relates to the fact that in just, you know, as a bystander last night at the Finance Subcommittee, I heard some testimony from individuals associated with the ESY program about their sense. I suppose it's the reality that they feel underpaid as compared to other individuals involved in the program. So my question is, as they mentioned that they have a considerable amount of prep work, that they start in February or March to prepare for extended school year, and that they're doing it sort of for the love of it, year after year, but without the pay for it, year after year. I'm wondering how this... Is this 12,500 going to address that issue? And if not, what's our plan to proper... If there is an imbalance in how they're being paid, what is our action plan to address it? Not if for another year. They're already been working, you know, without maybe being paid this March to now. So they're doing it out of the love of their heart. They're dedicated people. They want to stay. What is it that we can do to address the issue even post-retrospective... Retrospectively, you know, since March till now, for this year? Can we make good on that? And if not, can... What would our plan be to put into place a goal of addressing this before the next year's cycle starts?
So I don't totally have the ability to forensically go back. But what I think may have happened is because the document was represented as being identical to last year, when actually that was a quite meaningful difference. And I haven't been able to close the loop with the staff member to confirm that it was a misunderstanding. But based on what that person said, I think it might be that they were assuming it was the same as last year because that was what was asserted. I am hopeful that this relatively large... I think it's like a 40% increase year-on-year will, again, feel like a meaningful step to them again, as part of a multi-year plan to address this issue that we have all identified.
So I guess my question there would be, is this... Would they do better if they were being compensated per diem than flat rate? Given the amount of hours, you know, if they were keeping track of their specific hours, just like, I don't know, coaches or other people might be getting it by the hour that they go in, or instructors for music or whatever, rather?
I think... I think... I don't want to speculate. And I think that should be part of the analysis that we should do. I think that... I don't want to speculate. Yeah.
So we're thinking then, just so I can understand this, that the 12,500 is a meaningful representation of the amount of time that they're spending from, say, March to September or March to August to run the program?
I don't think we have that data. I think that was what we requested, and unfortunately, we didn't get it. But I think it's an improvement over last year. And again, we're on the path towards...
So I guess, again, I guess my...
A balanced approach.
Right. So my question is, if we were to take a look at 2024, the Extended Program, and we already know what they've spent in time for this year, how... Again, we're short-staffed, but how difficult would it be to get a pretty close estimate of whether we're close with this number or not?
I don't think we know how much time they've spent.
Okay.
Yeah. We don't know that. That person might...
They might.
Might, right. But again...
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
You made the motion. Andy seconded. Donna, you got a comment?
Yes. Actually, no, I had questions, if that's okay. Sorry, just so I can catch up a little. These stipends are the rates that would go into effect beginning July 1st. Is that right?
So one thing we did last year was we made it for FY '25. This year's version does not have a specific fiscal year on it so that should there be any sort of delay, we could carry it forward. And so, yes, it would go into effect, I think, for July 1 because we already have an FY '25. But all of our summer programming starts after July 1.
Okay. And so, and a technical question on the motion. So the motion isn't for one year. It's just to approve the document?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And then if, for any reason, we made... Someone suggested changes, they would... Those changes would then have budget implications, right?
Yes.
Okay.
One nice thing about this document is that if we accept it as is, it does not have budget implications.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Mariah made the motion. Andy seconded. Suzanne, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Jessie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And I abstain. Next up is an update on the process to identify an interim superintendent. Andy and Suzanne?
Right, thanks, Val. Yeah, so at our last meeting, a couple of things. Suzanne and I were tasked with updating the existing job description for interim superintendent and getting the position posted. Again, we're... The idea is to be looking for an interim to serve during the coming school year for one year. During that year, we'd be looking for a permanent superintendent. The other thing from last time was that we decided to put off until this meeting any discussion of what the screening committee for this position should look like because we wanted our new members to be able to weigh in on that. So what's happened since then is that Suzanne and I, as instructed, updated the job description. I would say the major... The most important thing we changed there was simply to remove the provision that whoever is in the interim role would not be eligible to apply for permanent superintendent. We got rid of that. So whoever is hired into this role would, in fact, be eligible to apply to become permanent. So the job got posted, I believe, a week and a half ago. And as of beginning of this week, we had nine applicants come in. So I don't know what's happened since the beginning of the week, but at least folks have been responding. Yeah. And in the job description, or in the posting, rather, I think we said that we would like to begin considering applications next week and interviews the week following that. And so I think it's about time to think about appointing the screening committee. So about that, I think the last two times that the school committee did this, which was in 2019 and then again in 2020, in each of those cases, the screening committee consisted of four members of the school committee, and that was it. And then, I don't know what happened in 2019, but my memory of 2020 is that that screening committee advanced only one finalist to the stage of being interviewed in public by the school committee. So interestingly, thank you, Betsy, for drawing this to our attention. So in November 2024, there came out some guidance from the AGO's Division of Open Government. It's one of... It's part of our packet for today. It's called Public Body Checklist for Preliminary Screening Committees Meeting an Executive Session. So the screening committee can meet an executive session under Purpose 8, but the guidance we're now given is that you have to have at least... You have to advance at least two finalists who would be interviewed in open session. That's really the big difference here. It doesn't say anything about who has to be on the screening committee. I think that's really up to the school committee to decide. It can't be a quorum of us, but anything short of that would be okay. I think we should probably also discuss whether we want to broaden, you know, broaden that committee to include any staff or any community members in addition to school committee members. Time is of the essence, though.
Thank you. Mariah?
Suzanne, did you have anything to add to this summary of what we've done so far?
I think the only thing to add is, well, two things. One is Alvin Cooper, head of HR, is out for a couple of days. So I did check with him today, but he wasn't in. So I don't know the number of new applicants we've gotten this week. And I think the other thing is, is that we said the posting would remain open until it was filled. So even though there's a deadline of, I think, tomorrow to apply, it's still open until we fill the position.
Nine?
We had nine at the beginning of this week.
All right. Mariah and then Carolyn.
Thank you. I want to put in a request that there do... That there is members off of this... I'm so incoherent at this point. That there are non-school committee members also on that. I understand time is tight, but I think it would be important. And we've certainly heard from members of the community indicating their interest to serve on such a body. So I think it would be valuable to have that. However, that can happen in an expeditious format. That would be great. And I had a question about... So are you hoping to identify or have volunteer... What's the process for school committee members who might be interested in being members to participate?
I think first, I'd like to hear from members on thoughts on composition. And we can go from there. Carolyn?
So I was going to ask a clarifying question, and I can respond to that, too, and make a statement. So we can have up to four school committee members?
Yes.
So I'll just make a... Are we just openly discussing this? Or just this is just discussion now?
Yes.
So I think it's essential that Dr. Weintraub be central to this. I don't know if there's a chair. But since this is his profession, educational leadership, I'd just like to say that seems essential to me. And then, as for composition, if we were... I would sort of... I'm not sure if I agree or what my thoughts are on what the composition would be outside of school committee members because I don't know what the process would be for... Like, wouldn't we have to... How would those selections be made? So if time is of the essence?
Since time is of the essence for interim, I think it might be hard to do that in a way. I'm just thinking back to our strategic planning process and figuring out the group representation and the community representation. I want to make sure that we get it right. So from my personal perspective, I think that for interim, we would probably be okay... I'd be okay with us having a school committee and then really having a robust discussion with community and here in session about how to construct that broader committee for the permanent position, if that makes sense. Bob?
I think it's a very important statement to the community to be inclusive in the search, even as an interim because, as you said, the interim person can't apply for the permanent position if they choose. So again, I've been involved in many, many, many searches, and I find that the support for the candidate who's chosen is dramatically increased if we have an inclusive committee from the community. And that includes teachers, and that includes students, and that includes administrators, and that includes members of the school committee. So even though it sounds like a maybe...
So that part, I'm with you on. It's the broader community in a short order. How would you recommend it in that?
It's a good question. I mean, that's complexity. But I think that, again, we have a new school committee, and I think the school committee needs to reach out to the community in some way and have maybe four representatives from the community serve on the search committee. Just... I just think we have to figure out how to make this happen in terms of how many community members are on the committee. I think two students should be on the committee. I think we have one student right here who might be interested in that. I'm not sure. Two students, four parents, four teachers. I know it sounds big, but I think, again, we define ourselves by these very important processes. And so, you know, I don't care if the committee is up as 12 people. We have a bunch of applicants already, which is great, very positive. I know in the past, we haven't had huge numbers of applicants, so now we do. So let's go. Let's get a robust committee to do the prepared questions, do the interviewing, and recommend three finalists to the school committee, and we make the decision.
Okay. So we're meeting again in a week. Suzanne? Oh, sorry, Donna.
It's okay. I actually, if you don't mind, have a couple of questions.
Of course.
Technical questions first. So does it matter from an OML point of view? Should we be considering who's on subcommittees when it comes to the committee makeup? That's one of my questions.
So yes, but we... Yes.
Okay.
The answer is yes.
The second question is, is there any guidance? I don't think there is because I know the policy manual quite well. But in the Brookline Policy Manual, I don't think there's any guidance on interim appointments for superintendent. Is there? From the Brookline Policy Manual?
I mean, what we're looking at here is guidance from the AGO for any screening committee that meets an executive session, nothing to do with the position.
No, no. I mean, in terms of... Like, there's guidance in terms of principal searches and whatnot. So is there any guidance in like how those are... How the makeup of the committee or anything like that, or the process as outlined in the... I think it might only be for permanent, the, I think it might only be for permanent, but I think it's worth looking at to make sure we're not violating our own policies. And then I think I'll just wait to hear what everybody else says before I chime in with any opinions.
Suzanne?
Yeah, I just want to remind the public and remind us that the big search will be next year. So it'll actually start, it could start as early as November in terms of bringing people together, you know, get it posted around January or February. So it's, it's very soon after this. And I know for the, for the search for Dr. Gillery, we had maybe 20 people on that search committee, and so that's, that's big. So, you know, it's, it's a little hard to get 20 people to come together, and so I would think in numbers smaller than that, you know, maybe instead of four community, we have two. Maybe instead of four teachers, we have two, you know, I mean, kind of pare it down a little bit, so it can move a little faster. And then, and then the bigger committee would be in the, in late fall, just to keep in mind.
Anybody else? Carolyn?
Sorry, I lost my train of thought, but I'm gonna remember. So in terms of this composition, oh, so one is, I should know this, but when the select board creates ad hoc committees, I don't know what their process is, whether the chair appoints people, maybe sometimes they interview people. So, you know, I guess there are different models in terms of levels of cumbersome, and perhaps we can, you know, be inclusive and have a broader community, committee without it being terribly cumbersome. And perhaps it could even be that once the school committee members are appointed, that, that they work on pulling other people together, defining what the different roles are, whether, you know, advisory, how much participation, maybe that would help in terms of streamlining, because it, it does seem like it would be quite cumbersome to try to make those, all of those decisions as a full school committee.
Mariah and then Jessie.
I would like to, maybe this is accelerating things a little bit too quickly, but I'm in a mood tonight to move things along. So I just would like to, if we could have, do, can we take a motion to have Bob be the chair of this and have him work out these details outside of the group?
I was gonna point him chair, but-
Okay.
Comments first.
Yeah, well, I'm hoping we can get there, and then we don't have to all mull this as a group. We can delegate it to the chair to decide.
I always want to delegate to, to the chair.
Okay, well, I would strongly encourage the chair to delegate to Bob then. Thank you.
It could get delegated. Thank you.
Sorry?
My comment can simply be brought up with our presumptive chair of the interim superintendent search committee within the school committee.
If it's important, it would probably be good for everybody here.
The, I, I just wanted to make sure that if there, we have various communication processes within the district to get to everyone.
Yeah.
And so I feel it's important that even though this is a short fuse in terms of seeing candidates, tomorrow's Friday and superintendent update news is go, newsletters go to everyone. If even within our parent community, we reach one person who is very interested in letting us know about this, and they take the time to read the newsletter to the bottom, and there it says, you know, let us know, we should invite that. And if they know of people in their friendship circle that they think would be very helpful because of their background or something like that, that I think would be a really good, strong way of telling the parent community that we're even looking broader within Brookline. If we get one or two people that volunteer and they seem to match up with what we're thinking, that would be a big step also to bring the town in, someone from the town in, not that, I don't mean town government, I just mean from our, someone from Brookline, one or two people in terms of composition, in addition to school committee and all the different subgroups of the school district that Bob listed.
That's an important comment. Thank you, Jessie. Bob?
Yeah, I just want to say that I think Val and Sarah should really organize this thing. I appreciate people thinking I should be the chair.
So, well, hold on.
Let me, I just, I want, I want to respond to Suzanne for a second, because Suzanne, I think you said we'll post the permanent position in January, and I want to, I, I want to state that we need to do that much earlier to get the most candidates for the permanent position. So I would just, this is-
I think she said, I think, I think she was starting November, December.
Yeah, I think that's, that's too late.
Yeah.
I just want to say that. I think we should start in October.
You mean, start in October or post it in October?
Start thinking about it, starting, start organizing the search in October.
Well, that's what I said. I said, yeah, I said late fall.
You know, I would like to-
To be ready to post in January, is typically when the postings go out.
Okay, well, I mean, that's later.
That's fine. I mean, okay.
So what I was gonna say, Bob, and what I wanted to say, actually, much earlier in the meeting, so it's a good opportunity to say it again, so a little bit of what Mariah said, there is a lot that's gonna happen this year. We have negotiations with all of our units. We have an interim search, we have a permanent search, and then we have all of the regular stuff. So there is plenty of work and plenty of leadership opportunity to go around. So I, I think it's perfectly wonderful to use your skill set to chair, I'll participate, but to chair this, this interim group. And would love for you to, in this week, think about what that community and sort of other representation might look like, and then bring that back to us for discussion at the next, at the next meeting.
Yeah.
We're meeting in a week, right? Is that, where's Betsy? Yeah, that way. Do you accept this?
I'll prepare a small proposal.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Anything else?
So to be clear, since I think Andy said interviews, applications would, are coming in.
I think we might be slightly delayed on that.
Yeah, I think what, what we said in the posting is just that, as Suzanne said, posting stays open until the job is filled. The search, the screening committee, which of course still doesn't exist, intends to begin reviewing applications next week and to start holding interviews the week after that.
Got it. So obviously, that would be pushed back based on what Bob brings to us next week.
We're not committed to that timeline.
Okay.
I mean, our timeline is somewhat fixed, right? But I think pushing by a week to make sure we have a, a good process is a reasonable thing to do, and certainly the right thing to do for the, the community and for the district. Anything else on this?
Yes.
So tomorrow, in the superintendent's message, what is the message that's going to the community tomorrow? Is it, if you're interested, please email Betsy Fitzpatrick so that she can, I know Betsy's making a face, and I understand, but like, what is, just to be clear, what is, what is the call to action for the community?
So it was Jessie's idea, but I'm gonna paraphrase what I would recommend and then have, welcome others to react to that. We obviously, this goes to, I don't know how many, 10,000 people or more, the newsletter. So we want to certainly welcome participation, knowing that for having two or four, however many, community members join, that probably not all 1,000 who respond are gonna be on a committee. But I think the, we just, we need to frame it as participation. And if this, if this piece isn't, doesn't work out for you, or the time commitment doesn't work out for you, there are going to be many opportunities. There'll be public interviews for interim, there'll be a, a big community process for permanent. But I think it's important to engage and to keep people engaged so we can, we can, you know, mail to them, email to them, make sure that everybody is on the same page. So Betsy has a thought on this?
I was gonna say, we have a school committee news going out on Monday, and we get 13,000 viewers. But what, my work is a Google form, my people who are interested fill out Google form and the name and contact information, and what skills they have, something like that that allows them to-
I was gonna say something like that, and maybe also if they have thoughts about what is most, like, things they want to, the school, the, the search committee to focus on. That way they could share thoughts. And then also, if they want to volunteer, that's a checkbox in what they're gonna bring to it. And that way you don't get emails coming in, you can have it all in one place.
All in one thing with, with ability to filter. Betsy, does that, how much overlap is there on the school committee list versus the- So we could do that through this one, through our, our school committee newsletter?
Can we do a little, I want to say, expectation setting of some sort? Because if it does go to 13,000 people-
Right.
Yeah, I was gonna say-
We might want to point out that we're-
I was gonna say-
Sorry, Carolyn.
Sorry, 'cause I, sorry, Donna, if you-
It's okay. Go ahead.
I mean, I, I, I want to reach out. I feel like we're, maybe, if there's something to go out tomorrow, it might make more sense for it to be like, watch this space for information about how to apply. Like, we're a little jumping the gun, and I think there, it does have to have, you know, I think we, so I don't know, there needs to be a little discussion about like, what, what is the time commitment? What is the structure? Like, so maybe, watch this space might make more sense for tomorrow, other than like hastily having people apply for something that's not defined yet. Bob?
I agree with that. Can we do a little planning backwards? And do we have a, a sense of when we want to make the appointment? So it's, it's May 15th today, right? And what are we talking about, June?
July 1 start.
July 1 start, so.
Our backward planning is-
June 20?
Our backwards planning is here.
No, 'cause we have to make a timeline.
Right.
Part of what I'll do is that. So.
I mean, I, you know, I'm not sure what, if any notice, I mean, it's, it's really one of our candidates, like, it's a, our, our ideal is to have, obviously, somebody for July 1.
Okay.
So that we can reduce any acting period.
Let me prepare a timeline for next week.
That'd be great. I mean, it's, if, if somebody is somewhere, they might have to actually be there until June 30th. They might want to take a vacation. There are so many variables, so it'd be great if you could prepare.
And I think we have to, what Carolyn said is smart, I think. Watch the space for-
Yep.
For your involvement in this process. Because not that many people, obviously, will be able to be involved.
Right. Like, two or four, however many, I think Suzanne had two and you had four, and so that's not a lot out of 13,000.
Right.
My math isn't great, but that's not a lot out of-
I'm sure 500 parents will volunteer.
I, I don't want to spend a lot of time on what the, the message should be in that Monday email, but I think it would be helpful just to have some sort of reassuring message, particularly maybe from Bob, if you're heading, since, or did we vote yet? I can't remember. If Bob is heading that search, yeah. Whoever, just reassuring message to the community that we intend to make this as inclusive as possible, and, you know, we're running on a short timeline and more information will come.
Bring up a good point on, so we have a communications team. Mariah, you're still on it, right?
You tell me.
Well, you were on it. Carolyn, were you on it as well?
It was us and Stephen?
I am as well.
Oh, and, and, yeah.
Sarah. Okay, so we have three still.
Yes.
Can we ask our communications small group with, working with Betsy on a, and Bob on a message?
For tomorrow?
For Monday.
For Monday.
For Monday. Yeah, sure. Betsy, will you, you always do, and we'll say okay, like we always do?
Val, say that one more time.
So we have a communications group. Stephen used to be on it. It's Mariah, Sarah, and Carolyn. It, this is when we need statements drafted or things like that. And I'm adding you as the subject matter person expert on this, if, if you're so willing, to work on a message that would go in Betsy's newsletter for Monday.
Fine.
Okay. Does that work for you, Carolyn?
Yes, except I won't be able to do anything this weekend, but I would agree, like, I'm sure whatever it is will be fine. I don't need to, I don't need to do anything other than say fine.
Okay. Sarah, Mariah, okay. All right. Anything else on this before we come back next week? Okay. That brings us to subcommittee and liaison reports, and given that we haven't appointed new committees yet, I'm not sure if anybody has anything they want to report. Mariah?
Just that at finance yesterday, we did not do grants and gifts, so we were gonna schedule a special meeting for early next week. If, Betsy, has everyone responded? Okay, well, if you haven't responded to Betsy and you are on finance, then make sure you respond. And in addition to covering grants and gifts, we will also get a little bit of an update on the Q3 report that includes a little bit more detail on the current year-end projections compared to the Q2 year-end projections and the, any modifications to the sources of funds to close that gap. So we'll get a memo on that. And then, that will then, both of those will then come to full school committee next week.
Thank you. Any other liaison, oh, sorry, correct, Carolyn?
Just following up on what Mariah's saying, what is the timeline for reconfiguring? And would, would you intend to, is it sort of standard practice to have the new people on finance?
It, the short answer is it depends. And I was gonna reach out to people this weekend to talk about various committees, subcommittees, and assignments for liaisons and things like that.
So is that a question about then? Is that, I believe last year, our chair sent out a spreadsheet or something, asking people to identify, like, in priority order, things that might be interested in for both for liaisons and subcommittees. I'm hearing from you that you're gonna reach out to people individually and get that, and then sort of combine it. Is that gonna be a different process than last year then?
Yes, it's, I'm gonna call you. Andy's a spreadsheet guy, and I'm gonna call people.
No, I don't, I don't actually know how to use a spreadsheet, so whatever it was, it wasn't a spreadsheet. I think I talked to everybody.
But I will talk to folks and then talk through their interests, and then also what needs are on, on various subcommittees.
On that, on that topic then, have you given any thought to any reconfiguration of the subcommittees, given changes in next year's budget, or maybe merging or changing of any committees that you can share with us now, so we can be thinking about this?
I can.
Because the meetings are coming up.
I absolutely can. So the, the one for certain is that finance and capital will be merged together. So that will be one committee.
Okay.
And right now, that's the only change that I see.
During this time that we're doing updates, could I do an update for expenditures and revenue? Does that work?
Carolyn had a question.
Carolyn had a question first.
This might be new business, but I'll throw it in here. This is something I've, might have brought up in new business a couple of times, and I discussed with Andy, and it's come up with increasing frequency. It might not be in the immediate, in the same process as the standing committees. I'm of the opinion that we need to have at least an ad hoc subcommittee to look at the whole buffer zones, catchment areas, fiscally responsible use of our facilities, that whole realm.
Are you offering to chair this?
I don't know. I'm certainly, I'd be happy to discuss it.
Okay. Sorry, you had expenditures and revenues?
So I'd like to remind everybody to look to expenditures and revenues. It's in with all of the other meetings that we do around the town. And just to kind of like get you interested, I want to tell you that right now we're looking at school-town partnerships. Actually, it's Jessie that's on the committee that's looking at it in different towns. So I think that paying attention to those meetings is really important to all of us, and would just like to get you to, you know, keep an eye on that.
Are those all recorded?
They're all recorded, and there's minutes.
Any other, oh, sorry. Bob?
Yeah, this has to do with the budget. I, obviously, this is my first meeting.
Oh, should we wait for new business? Is it, if it's not a, is it relating to a subcommittee?
It's just a question, is the budget finalized, or are there possible changes?
Our budget has been finalized, so our budget that is going to town meeting for a vote, our recommended budget is finalized.
And there are possible changes at town meeting, maybe?
That's town meeting's budget.
That's town meeting's budget. Our recommended budget has gone, or will go, but town meeting, as you know, town meeting members are the ultimate decided-
Okay.
Decision makers on the, on the final budget.
Speaking of town meeting members, what happened? No, you take one of their mics, so everyone can hear you.
Take a mic.
So I, I did come up short, just short. I got, but I mean, I was, I got 25 votes, which, you know, as a write-in, like, I'm not sure how these things ordinarily go, but I was, you know, pretty proud, and we made a little flyer. Carolyn helped out, so thank you so much, Carolyn. And, you know, who knows? Maybe there's a next year, or not next year, but like, maybe there's a, you sure?
Sure.
But I was definitely really excited to do it. And thank you, guys. I mean, Jessie, Carolyn, Sarah, Bob, you guys all helped out. So, you know, I really, and Mariah, you too. You guys helped out, so I was really, really grateful for that.
I'm sorry you didn't make it, but I'm really proud of you for trying. That was wonderful.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Which precinct?
Any other updates? Suzanne?
Yeah, I just, we've been having some curriculum meetings. We haven't had much updates lately. But so we had a really good conversation the end of April about the mass dyslexia guidelines, about the training that's been going on, that we've sent people to the Dyslexia Institute, that the state puts on DESI, and it was just a really good conversation, talking about MTSS as well. So I just, if people are interested in that, you could take a look, it's recorded. And also, Betsy, this is new, but we will not be meeting in May.
Oh, that's canceled.
For curriculum.
Oh, okay.
That's just, that's hot off the press.
Yeah, you really, yeah, I was just looking at it in the calendar, it was announced, saying, oh my, oh, we're not meeting, okay.
Any other updates? Okay, any new business? Donna?
Oh, thanks. I'm hoping, is new business the right place to ask questions about, you had mentioned the communications team, or I don't know what you, what it's called, communications team? How, what is the process by which the, the communications that are identified for the newsletter, the email, whatever, whatever, whatever we call it, Betsy? Like, how are we identifying items to go in there? And can I make a suggestion for the folks here to consider that maybe when there are issues that come to us in public comment, specifically the Driscoll VP or the second grade classroom, if those are, can be included somehow in the communication that's going out to the community?
So Betsy does this amazing summary of our meeting, if you want to talk about-
So the school committee newsletter-
So the school community newsletter is new this year, it was a request from the school committee, so I think the request was last summer, we talked about it, and we finally started in January, and our idea is that it's fact-based, so it's a summary of the meeting itself. I think it would, I'm not equipped maybe to venture into other areas, I wouldn't want to represent something one way that was how I heard it, or something like that, and the committee, of course, even the communications team can't collaboratively look at something on, say, a Google Doc, because that would violate open meeting law, so it's a little more difficult to share other things like that. But, look, I send it out, we write it, we edit it, we can send whatever we want, but, you know, there's a precedent to be set if we start to include other, other things.
So what would be the way, and I'm asking, I'm asking, go ahead, Jessie.
No, no, you're.
I'm asking everyone here, what would be the way where we would respond as a unit to community members who come in and advocate for something, so for example, the Driscoll VP, I mean, I understand that has budget implications, but even just ignore, like, how do we, as a unit, respond to things like that?
So that would be an open meeting law issue, and so if you wanted to discuss it, you could ask for it to be docketed for a public meeting, or discussion in a public meeting.
Got it.
So for all of us to be able to communicate about something, it has to be docketed for a public meeting.
And Donna, this is just obvious, and then also we have the emails of the individuals, so we can answer to them directly.
But not reply all, you can't reply all to those, just, yeah.
You have, Betsy handed out to all of us their emails, so you are able to answer to what you heard.
But not in a way that can be seen by the rest of the school committee.
Carolyn?
Sorry, we're in new business.
We're in new business.
Yeah, so, thank you, so.
Yeah, we sort of segued out of subcommittee somehow, but.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, did you still have a?
Yeah, on the liaison side, I know that you haven't made assignments yet, but I'm just informing the committee that tomorrow morning at 8:30 is the CPAC monthly meeting. They contacted me about two, three weeks ago, asking me if I wanted to continue, we had a gloriously successful year together, and I, I agreed, I agreed to be liaison again with the permission of the chair, I guess, at this point, and so I will be there tomorrow and be giving them an update about recent happenings in the school committee, which has been a request of theirs.
So for liaisons, I will say that generally speaking, you keep the ones that you have, unless you are unhappy with those, and you can let me know, and then the ones that, so for example, for Stephen and Helen, we would then redistribute those with the new members, is generally how that works. So if you have no, when I talk to you, if you have no problems with your liaison assignments, those will, in all likelihood, continue. Carolyn?
So I'll put this in new business, and I'm going to refer to the emails that we received about the moving of a vice principal. I guess this is a request for us to receive information from, I don't know who, maybe Dr. Gillery, when we voted to reduce or to eliminate a VP position, my understanding was that was blind. So as we started getting these emails, I was like, oh, okay, I have no idea who's moving where, what's being eliminated, what the staffing is at each of the buildings, so I would be interested in that information if, if that can be sent to the school committee.
Can I just add to that, please? It's, it's frustrating to get this news from the community, that's, you know, I'll put a period at the end of that sentence, it's not the way that communication should go. I think Carolyn is being a little more roundabout about saying it, but my, my position is, I get a phone call or I get a text, what's happening, a VP's moved, and like, why should we be finding out after the community knows about it? So if it's a, if it's a rumor, you know, that's one way, but we get like a torrent of emails, and then petitions are being, you know, sent out, and then there's 500 parents signing something, and then it isn't even, we still, I mean, me personally, I'm, I don't know that that, even the public comment that happened tonight, I don't even know if it's true. All I know is that there's a piece of information that ended up sending tons of emails to us and petitions getting started. So something about how the school committee can be kept apprised of decisions that are made needs to happen, because this is sort of backwards, in my opinion.
Val, can I?
Yes.
Related to that, we got an email, VHS parents and caregivers this week got an email that Dr. Brown was appointed permanent science department chair, and I forwarded it to my PSBMA address intending to forward it to the committee, but I don't think I have, oh, did I? Okay, amazing, then I'm proud of myself for doing what I was hoping I would do. Anyway, the point is that like, it is, it's, it's only because I'm just sort of adding to this point, it's not just about Driscoll, but it's like, basically these big leadership changes would be helpful to have a mechanism by which school committee, whether it's delegated to the building leader, perhaps, because they're the ones sending out, I presume, I presume a message went out to the Driscoll community, I have no idea, because I didn't see it, right, and none of us saw it, I presume, or maybe some did, but anyway, unless we happen to be a member of that community and get it forwarded, we almost never get it forwarded directly to us, with some exceptions. So I think it would be very helpful to have that as a standard practice, I agree.
Okay, any other new business? Suzanne?
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, we're bringing up, we're bringing up points that are going to help us move forward as a community, as a committee, and it's really important, so as people think of these things, they should kind of jot them down, because we'll have a workshop this summer where we talk about our norms, our guidelines, how we function as a committee, and so, you know, we just need to think about and have a discussion about what's going to make it work for us. And so I would just encourage people, as they think of these ideas, to jot them down or keep them in mind and bring them to the workshop, so we can talk about how we're going to work well as a, as a committee together.
Do we have a date for our summer workshop?
Don't think we do, no.
Okay.
I don't think we have anything, yeah, on June 30th, correct? Yeah. But that would be helpful to have a date, because a lot of us have hoped to have plans this summer, I don't know.
I'll work with Betsy and staff to figure out some blocks that we can circulate for everybody's schedule, scheduling. Jessie?
Yeah, I guess on new business again, probably about four to five months ago, I'd have to check the minutes, I did add a new business item about SROs after the Select Board had voted to recommend that they be brought back into the schools. I guess because of the budget crisis we had, we never got it docketed, but I would respectfully request that we, that I've entered it as new business again, and that at some point it should be docketed. Perhaps, you know, given how many meetings we're going to have now before we break for the summer and the summer workshop, however, if we were able to get the program started for September at the beginning of school, wouldn't that be great if that, if that so happens? So I would just, again, bring that up as a, another item for us to consider at some point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? A motion to adjourn?
Second.
Betsy, you can figure out who, who moved and seconded that. Thanks, everybody, have a great night.